This place is full of love. You can tell the people that like to be with old people because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Twice a day, every day, activities, people have an organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here is a good place to be.
Yes, sir. These were all the ones on one percent sales tax, my little bit of our budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to have contracts with them.
I was moved to good chairman's ditch on a provider service agreement. Second, do you have a chairman signature on the other service agreements? Discussion. I had a couple of these folks in the last couple of weeks come up and really thanked me for some of that stuff, so, but that doesn't mean they appreciate, even some of them they didn't get what they even necessarily asked for. What was the favorite BCI? There's... Let me find these out here.
I'll figure it out.
Still want me? Clearing it here.
All right. We can start with high Barker. They've got the repairs done at the library, repairs done here, they've got heads on order for the jail, so they can complete that. So we did a five year at the public health building. I did get the bid from them on public health. It was... Well, I fully did tell you guys as well what the one I just got this morning. Because I had called and asked them, because they had said that it's like a $3,900 fee for disposal of the glycol that's in the system. So I called and asked them, I said, "Is it still going to be that much due to the explosion and the loss of a bunch of the glycol?" I said, "That doesn't seem to correlate." So we lowered that to 7,200, I believe. I can't read on this one. Um, overall bid. So this, the bid they put in would be to fix the glycol tank, reseal, or put a new tank in, refill the glycol system, taking out the hole that's left, putting a new, and putting a new secondary port for testing. According to the fire guidelines, you need two ports to test on a fire sprinkler system of glycol. So it'd be adding a new port, adding the tank, replacing every head in the building, new standards for the new glycol, and then disposing of the glycol across 1470, not the 29,000, or not the 3900.
Is there, is there a life expectancy on glycol? Like, it can't be used, or?
Because they test it every year to see what, where the rating is, I would think seven to 10 years usually.
Is there any of those county waste pickup stuff? That's through the...
Natural resources.
Natural resources. So I'm wondering if there's any way of going through them to dispose of it instead of... I guess I, if they got a five gallon tank or drum, they could go and take out a lot of it?
Yeah. At 1470, what's, what's the volume of glycol that we're disposing of?
He was, I'm guessing doing half of the volume that was there originally, because his original bid for getting rid of it was 3170.
And is that like, how many gallons?
Okay, so you're asking where we store it? Sorry? Where we gonna store it? Put backyard, don't you?
You're sealing it and buying the containers too, still are you?
Mr. Chairman, is there anything out there at the landfill that we have to store or don't?
Nothing.
We don't have anything for antifreeze.
They used to do oil, I don't know if they still do.
They do oil at the landfill.
They use oil.
But we don't have anything for antifreeze.
Essentially, that's what I call it, is we have things.
That land farm just needs to the Weston County, Weston County line. They take that?
Again, they sold off.
That's all they'll take, no more.
Well, the bid to repairs is 29,810, and that does not include the reusing glycol. That would be extra charge and a fortune.
I read that town. I read Johnny at East Town, they used to pull it close up. And they, they let the coal mines bring back, trucked out the new antifreeze and recycled as well.
I don't think glycol goes bad, can you get my new refresher, refiner or something?
Depends on the glycol too. The old glycol used to turn into alcohol in systems, so that was unknown, so they had to re-engineer the glycol to meet fire codes.
And they're saying like, the life expectancy is probably a period that they've got inside of it.
Well, when it condensates, it takes water and a little bit of the time through the system, so eventually you're going to degrade it to where it's no longer performing the
So, the next question is, where do we pay for it?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that it would go, come out there and get grams of major
You're talking about 13s?
No. Uh-uh. It's 26, I'm sorry.
One, two, four, it's four to five, I guess. What's the total amount?
28,610 plus...
Mm-hmm. That's a couple.
29,610 plus 1470.
It's 1470. I'll send you all your new video this morning.
Do you have it?
It's in my email.
Can you send it to the vacuum?
Can I go quick?
Are you satisfied with, like, the requirement kind of stuff?
I have all the stuff.
That follows, I've been checking, you're satisfied with the checklist that we put forward, most of the, any info we needed, that kind of...
A lot of legal issues, he didn't, I mean, I don't see an itemized breakdown in sprinkler heads or the per price gallon on the glycol. There's 55 sprinkler heads that have been taken on the glycol, showing the new transport
We can send that to you, Brandon?
This morning, I called and asked them a second, an additional question because I thought about that glycol. We don't have a full system of glycol anymore, because some of it was lost upstream, so I called in order to ask, you know, is there a discount then since you're moving as much glycol as you for it?
Thanks a lot.
Will we specify what type of glycol that happened or program?
Well, it says the fire system is an LEP, I believe.
Is the, was the glycol that came out of our old one, is that, is that also classified as an LEP?
It was old, it's the red, it needed to be replaced, but now we had the accident.
The reason why I was asking is that LEP is not, is hazardous, it's not required to be...
Yeah, that's the newer, it's the older, it's the older glycol, so that's why they're having to change sprinkler heads and stuff, because it doesn't need, it's a different
Listen, um, I do my, excuse me, I need to be in the new system, do you have that? Do you have the drawings in it?
I've got the old one, they're at the, they're at, where they're supposed to be at the public health.
So what my question is, have you submitted to them that perhaps they have to change them?
No, I asked them, I said, "So is there changes that need to be made due to that?" And he said, "No, they just need to replace the heads," I mean, the NFPA code.
So...
If it would be the same volume, it would be the same system, they're not changing any of the piping or any of that, they're just changing the heads.
And is, is fine if we have a line here?
I wouldn't revolve either of them, very, very quickly. Yeah, I called to get clarification, because what I read through, it almost sounded like to me there was going to be additional money to bring it up to code.
Right.
And I said, "What is this stating?" He said, "No, once we replace all the heads and the glycol, it'll be up to code, we'll input it in the dashboard." But what they're doing will bring it to code, there won't be additional needed, is what he told me.
Got that, Brandon? I wonder maybe some things cost.
I can motion to, uh, print this, venture out of major repairs. Nobody want to die or prove it, move on. What about dying?
What we've been after seems to be down, we're kicking this can a long time, I'd make the most, a motion to, you know, draw like Brandon, move ahead and have the sprinkler system at the, at the health, updated to meet NFPA code. Twenty-one thousand, thirty dollars coming out of the government ground. Is that good?
I just wanted to get a contract for the attorney's office to review.
I would, I did my motion to, with approval of, after attorney looks at the contract and approves it.
All was in favor, but motion, the motion on the floor, please sit up.
I am.
Close.
Okay. On to the library wall, I had sent you all a bid from White's and one from Sean Craftry, both doing the description of work, and both of them are pretty much similar. Except White says they'll use melo, mellow, put a steel it, and Sean's going to use a liquid, liquid rubber. Sean will give us a one-year warranty. White said there won't be one, he's up beyond manufacturing, is what they're using. White's bid is $37,751.20.
This is one of the small out here.
The west, the west wall of the library.
The wall of the library.
Yeah. This foundational wall, digging out, pulling back, resealing, plasticking, rubber sealing, filling cracks, and then putting soil back in and locking in.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not comfortable enough to know exactly what's going to happen and what's going to be the downside of it. I think I'd like to have more information, because I'm not always sure cheapest is best.
And both bids explains exactly what they're doing.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one of those, and I haven't had a chance to figure it out.
You gotta get your emails, do you?
No, that has been hacked, and I don't want to touch that.
I'll pose as that, see if Nick or Sean could come in.
Yeah, I would call them all, and see if they'll come in.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Please.
We're probably through the really wet part of the year as it is, so... All right, this way, I'm not holding up.
Please, you know, and I just said on the lawnmower, if you're still willing to approve, I have two different ones. Bomb dars, it's a cup cadet, 54-inch. When a hardware has a Toro, 50-inch. They both have three year warranties. The bomb dars price is 37,4999 for the cup cadet. The ace hardware is 4,599 for the Toro. A bagger add for the cup cadet is 5,9999. A bagger add for the Toro is 6,9999. And then a small trailer to haul it would be 12,9999. So through bomb dars, it would be 5,64997, or through ace, it would be 6,599997.
Who's again? Sorry, Brandon.
Five, $5,649.97 would be through bomb dars for the cup cadet, the bagger, and the trailer. 6,599997 would be ace hardware for the mower, bagger, and then it will still be bomb dars for the trailer.
How much time, I mean, you're ballparking how much time you're, you're actually going right now, like...
Twelve to fifteen hours a week.
Yeah. I should cut it down to...
A guy with a mower on the mower, and then I'd also be able to hit 12,000, maybe
You have a preference on which mower?
Either one. They both have three-year warranty, so I think it'd be in best interest of the county to probably go with the cup cadet, I think it's almost $2,000 cheaper.
You're going to sell it in the next season?
Oh, I got two months out here.
So, there's my pain, installing the building, so perhaps wait, so we may get rid of those and get one.
You want sale at the end of the year?
Yes, you can get sale sometimes, but not at the start. That's just my pain. I understand what you're trying to tell us, I get that, but, and perhaps in the long run, with the waiting for the savings, the savings, with how pretty today is, um, yeah, that, this is going to cost you to, oh, they're not here. It seems interesting, I just, we can, yeah, so, we're going to, we're going to see them
Do you have a place to store the mower? You have a bigger one?
We can share it up with, I'll embrace it.
I might be opposed to wait until, you know, they go on sale at the end of the year, but then, as well, we gotta remember, they don't last forever, when they're sales going, we may have to move pretty quickly.
Yeah, I'll ask them that, to let me know if they can have a sale coming up.
Are both of these mowers installed?
My feeling is the board's leaning towards maybe leaving, or we...
Could we get a fair approval for that when the sale happens? We could just have approval? Or do I need to come back when the sale goes on and then wait to see when the meeting's going to be, and then see if it's coming by time then we're back?
That's what I was going with, we may have to act quickly, I guess we had, do a fair approval for not to exceed a certain dollar amount.
I think that's a novel idea, and I guess I was encouraged just by Senator Driscoll's bill that moves this conversation forward. And, and let's hear some of those ideas. Instead of just saying, "Oh, one man, one vote, nothing we can do to help you, Weston County." Finally, it, it seems like the issue's been forced a little bit, and I'm encouraged by that at least.
I'm very encouraged by that, and I, I'm encouraged by the fact that the commissioners haven't pulled that resolution that created the constitutional senator and representative for Weston County. I think that that, I think that them not backtracking helps a lot and solidifies that it's not just this handful of people that want Weston County to be represented. And, and I think that the conversation is, is going to be... And I think that the conversation is gonna be really good and I think there's gonna be a lot of ideas thrown around.
Brains does have a couple of months worth of mowing left and if there is, if there is a sale, which they very well could get a lot of things in front of the season to do that. Could we miss an opportunity to do that and then we're not keep pushed back into a I mean, still bad of mowing in the winter time, I don't know if it might be more of a special order type thing, nonstop. That sort of thing.
I understand, well, on the other hand, if you, if you buy it at the end of the season because it's on sale and it sits for six months, you're always doing six months for a warranty and not knowing if you're gonna have problems with it.
This way out there. Mr. Chairman, I need to approve the purchase of the cup cadet from Bombdars along the the bag and the trailer. For the amount, five thousand six forty-nine ninety-seven.
I've seen a lot of building grounds made your barriers. Again, probably. I'm looking for, I don't know.
Excellent, Mr. Chairman. We take it out of depreciation. Just replace the board.
There you go. A lot of depreciation. Appreciation, I give her. What does it?
Twenty-one days.
What's yours?
One, one for the, for the depreciation. Did you say it's a Bombard one?
Yeah, I did.
Cooperation behind that. It's got a bigger swath and I think that was the goal intent of this and the pricing. Looks more appropriate.
Got a discussion. I'm Sean Ford to purchase the cup cadet from Bombdars, including the trailer and regular attachments. Be paid for out of appreciation reserves, or not reserves, sorry, appreciation. Equipment. Hold the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose. Anything else, Brad?
That's it? I'd be if you pull me back out. I'll come and get this money.
How soon?
I'll be on that call back.
Yeah, we had a discussion a couple of months ago about the copier and making it less expensive. She was married.
Okay, so you guys should have gotten quotes from Stephanie, will that be okay, hopefully? For a new one and an old one. So, quick, quick overview. The new one priced with buying it, sending the old one back would be seven thousand three hundred and twenty-one eighty. Buying the current one would be one thousand six hundred and fifty-sixty-seven. Your next question's gonna be insurance pricing for, so we have no line item for, for to write on it or to pay it. So, we need, I'm assuming you're gonna want to buy a one that we have because it's significant. Would be nice. Unless you're gonna buy me a seven thousand four, it's fine if you want to. But the, the deep contract for the seven thousand one is three hundred and sixty-nine left cost for the new one. For the old one, it's about one sixty-two twenty-five. The bad news is I have absolutely no idea how much you need over the year because it was part of the contract that we currently have. I'm estimating probably three to four, like three full sets of a whole printer a year. So that would be two hundred eighty-six seventy-five with the current one we have. So total, to keep the new printer and put money in the line so that we can buy ink would be two thousand six hundred ninety-five sixty-seven. And I'm asking if you choose that to add it to the tech equipment line that we have. That would be line item one hundred zero 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 six, zero zero three four, three three, three three, zero zero. So that would be that much in that account. That would cover our printer. I don't know if we have to come back for more ink. But we're gonna check with victim witness to see if they buy me a cartridge because we have delivery out of the office supply line for Stephanie. I think they will, but I think we should check before we do that. And then, we, our communications side, we pay our office phone only cable, the range voucher. And that's about a hundred and thirty a month. Right now, you guys put a thousand dollars in that line. So we, about, I mean, we need about six hundred out of that one, just to cover phones for the year. Or we're gonna go over. So in closing, I'm asking for six hundred we have communication line, two thousand six hundred ninety-five sixty-seven to be added to the office.
Is it top office that I was spared right now?
No, right now it's Marko's. And Marko's out of rapid, so I think the cost, but I, I don't know. Honestly, I don't know. I was calling last week. They worked on it last week, but I'm assuming they're gonna charge us to end rapid when we need it. Next, the other one I think is on a shared in top office, but I haven't had it long enough, so it might be cheaper with Marko for servicing the printer. I don't know that though. I'm assuming if that happens, we'll have to come back and tell you guys and say if they should, if the victim witness wants help, then with the printer that we, we have a better idea next year, a power machine we got here. And that's gonna depend on what cases we have to, because if we're gonna have exhibits with color, you know, that's gonna be it's just kind of helping here. I have no idea right now, just tell you here, how much in here.
How long have you had this printer?
The current one?
Yeah.
That was bought through, the contact started with Alex Burger, someone who took office, I think.
Okay, so. Has it been a print printer? I mean, like, if you buy that, if you buy that one, like, do you feel comfortable, has it been when it works well or has it been pivotal one? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think it does well for, if we were gonna spend money on it, if we ever had the money to spend on a new one, I could like hold punch and staple it, but that's a luxury, so it doesn't give any of us special features, it just prints.
That, that printer's like, probably at least six years old, isn't it? I don't know the life.
Whenever Alex took office, I think it was he's staying under that contract and I think it was probably a six or seven year contract, which I understand that shouldn't happen, we won't do that, but
I don't know, the lifespan of those things.
I don't know. I don't believe it still runs.
What do you prefer, Michael, you have a printer for that one?
I just want paper plenty. She, version sounds good to me, but last week, it's a piece of paper, fucking. I just don't know how much they charge to service it.
I don't know.
Do you have the contract?
I need someone.
I think it'd be appropriate to see the contract. I think there's done. What are there's left on it? Because we may be publicing two what's left on it.
We are, only if we don't buy it out. So the price of the new printer, there's a I didn't expect that, well. Six thousand fifty-nine is the, to break the contract, it's one thousand two hundred and sixty-two eighty-two. So the total of the brand new printer with Sharp would be, like, Sharp one through, what's that top office? Is seven thousand three hundred and twenty-one, including the contract amount of breaking the new one. So for the cost of a new printer to include sending back old printer is a seven thousand.
So here's what I thought, continue with your contract, you signed it. We're looking at the end of life on that machine. I'm not into, I don't know my, I'm gonna make this, it's the per copy charge is just, it's a parent's, it's, it's a joke. So what I, it's my thought that lift the contract out. Be cognizant of your copies, what amount are going to ask. Just be cognizant of what's going on with that. And when it comes back to the life of that copier is over, we start in, in first.
Or buy a whole new printer?
We'll, we'll get those quotes, we'll understand, we'll research the per copy charge, what it costs for. In cartridges versus toner, that type, you probably have a toner. That type of thing to see if you get twelve hundred, you get three thousand, you get, you know, for the toner. And seeing, because those are out, those are rated, we can go find those everywhere and do that research on those, on those printers. And I'm gonna call it a copy because I'm seventy-five years older than you. That's my angle, opinion is to finish the life of this machine. And, and, uh, later next time. But I appreciate you doing diligence to go look and be cognizant of what's out there. Because now I know what this process is and I appreciate that very much.
And Stephanie did the majority of that, I don't have to credit for her full quotes, she did, she's had to get it. If you go that route, we still need, the last of Marko voucher that went up was one forty-three thirty-nine. So we still need money in, somewhere in our budget for the printer to finish up because we don't have any. It was on the annex line and you guys took that away, but it's not happening to the voucher. What line do I want? Oh, I don't know what it used to be. They took it out. Oh, annex computer software license is where the money used to be for the printer. That would be thirty-one one one three. So, the only money that's put in there right now is gonna cover Golden West for the annex building. That's right down.
This one, in the, in the six account, there is nothing there.
In the six account, we have, on this equipment line, we have five hundred. And we also have Adobe and our Google One, which is everything our files are from. So those are monthly, I had a feeling you were asking this, so Adobe is twenty ninety-nine a month. Google One is twenty-four ninety-nine a month. Which Alex Burger has been paying for the last four years. And he no longer wants to.
Didn't know.
He didn't, I told you. But those are two, and so the yearly cost for Adobe is two hundred fifty-one eighty-eight. Google One estimated up a little bit is three hundred. So we're gonna run over the five hundred on just those two things.
Is anybody else choosing that cover?
Yeah. And the reason for that is because we want NCICs to print it through that. And so they can't, nobody else can. We can't have the chance of reaching another ministry or we have all of them.
I was just looking, going back to the printer issue, but appears you're right, I mean, it says five to seven meters for a large printer like that. Depending on use, for you, for the regulars, cut that down to five.
Especially if they have multiple users. So, yeah, so when you have multiple users doing that, not everybody is. Of where, some people drip the papers, some people don't wear the papers sometimes. If you have an issue of a jam, a itching, they drip it out instead of what they're supposed to do. They're mechanical creatures. They're subject to how people.
If you, if you keep what we currently have and live off the rest of this contract, we would need about eighteen hundred to two thousand for our printer to come on, like, for the whole year, put into a line.
You almost said a month, but, oh.
And maybe when we come back and we'll do, there's other offices that need printers and look at a better and how if we all do it at one time. That could be Northwood project type thing, is that one, is that one that you need replaced?
Yeah, that's awesome.
We have a quote to get ours replaced from top office. And I don't know the lifespan of that one because this one, because everyone uses this one. And I have a quote and maybe he would give us a deal if we went and got two. And I don't know about Roman Bridge, how it's Marty trying to get a new one.
It's the one we bought, we're gonna use.
Oh geez. Yeah.
So why?
Really cold.
You're saying it's not wifi, it's actually wire?
I think she has a little screen on there.
Maybe, because that's the guy who owns top office, like, Charles.
I'm not sure how. Longarm is your contract, so whereas you were gonna afford us to remember.
And I, I do think this requires us to sit down and have that conversation on these because there is an interesting thing happening. If we're gonna have some less money, that we need to pinch fingers a little bit and get the best deals that we can. Avoid some of those weird added fees that, you know, just aren't aware, they always happen. So if we could have a longer discussion of what's coming through, what we do and, and find that money for that and with the expectation that we wouldn't ask for five to seven years for the next round that we do. I think that's justifiable on, on all parts, but right now, I think it's the whole way that we wait till we get the ability to conversa have this all across the board. Meaning to like, again, I would bring up, there would be portions that you would have codes so that you can private versus public. I mean, you should be able to have that code come in there and not print it until that code is in. So we just would like to have that so we can sit down and have a good conversation and of what we're spending, not just wanting to. But I do understand what your issue is right now, that you're gonna have to pay for it. You get it?
I think still not, you think it's.
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen to two thousand. I don't know if we have, some of our places that we have are new and in the golden trial, we print a lot. That's where you guys are gonna see like really increased printing because you gotta have like four sets of the same things for the holder or something. So those are really expensive ones, but.
We don't know.
We don't know what we got yet. But if we, well, I guess we come back and see if we have this or not.
That's a little bit, we pulled twenty-five hundred out of financial admin.
I have a comment, that makes me understand that it doesn't buy anything else.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Well, but do you want to create a new line then? Because I'm painting Adobe and Google One, I'm about seeing how.
It is better that we track it. It is better, so I don't want to say another line. Yeah.
Pretty hard, I'll be running five hundred.
And were you, did she say her shirt on that?
I, I was gonna say, but if you do that, can I just have? You know, I think actually I can make that. You're gonna see one month following the end of the year and it's gonna look funny because we're probably gonna break it though between the office tech and the office equipment to pay out the rest of the Adobe tool. I mean, because it shouldn't be.
Well, I think the reason you adjusted that is because the one bill for Golden West was paid already. So you're not gonna have that big bill. And I think that's why the adjustment was made.
So that's out of the annex count. And you put the right one in there, there's just no printer money in the annex one. Which is right, there shouldn't be a printer in the annex one when we're doing it. But, but all that's left, that three thousand that's left is for the monthly firewall maintenance stuff at the annex of Golden West. But that's why it's quit, we talked about it, it's quit, and that is why we just didn't put it on. Because a large firewall one is gonna be a yearly one, a huge one.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So there's discussion. I would prefer on twenty-five hundred dollars out of the financial admin, I'm putting it in a new line, I have. Attorney is pressured, or something like that, a copy.
How much did you say?
Twenty-five hundred.
I think two thousand is sufficient.
Take time, five hundred. By the way, if you have the case, it'll come up, you have money in there.
Okay, thank you. What about the six hundred for the community commissions line? Sorry, but I already, already, there was the, the range phones in the. A turn, there should be no phones paid out of the annex, if you see that, that's something wrong. The other thing, you pay other classes to visionary or internet. We have a thousand in that line right now, and it's about. So there's, okay, I'll think of it. So right now, last month, it was one twenty-five forty-five. So I guessed one thirty a month, so just leave the rest. Which I thought was about six hundred. A little cushion.
So can I make another motion? Six hundred covered.
Should.
Anybody care to make a motion? Move six hundred dollars out of financial admin into general attorney foundations.
And, and. Here's what I'm gonna say. Come back. So give us a couple months. And we'll know whether it's one thirty or whatever, so that we don't kind of play this game and back in March. Come back with a better figure. If you can have a good figure, just make sure.
So, it would be fine, we have time for two months, every month we will need. But, I like my office. One twenty-five forty-five is what we typically give them every month. So one thirty was just rounding it up. You guys wanna figure one twenty-five forty-five, what range means as every month, then we do that. But no matter what, I have to come back, because they won't make that, it's more than a hundred dollars. Okay, I'll come back if you want.
I'd say come back, and if the way of accounts we may have do some adjustments, we could do it all once then, so. Now, and visit every account later on.
Just before you're out.
We have one left.
But I could do it, I'm going with a way. Okay, I will do that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I see, Riley.
Well, I need to go now, she's one week off and then she's off to college, aren't you?
Well, have fun, Riley.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Don't be supposed to go in and get work, okay?
And then.
We just can't spend a whole bunch of money, so we're being really quick.
So I forwarded on your email to everybody, just so if they might have an opportunity, Monty probably hasn't seen it, but. Maybe some of the others that didn't get off, sent it till Sunday, I think. If you wanna kind of go through what you got going on. Okay, um, so we're. Short certain areas, um, over that budget stuff. So we're over, like the tower ramp. Uh, for sixty-four dollar charge, which we're granted the budget because it's a hundred twenty-two dollars a month.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com. And in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
We have a fourteen hundred, which is fourteen sixty-four. Pay that three to here. Our copying fax machine. That just kind of had that recent discussion about, I don't know if we. We are about two hundred fifty dollars a month. Or not a month, a quarter. So we'll be short two hundred fifty dollars for one of those quarter payments that we're giving out, that budget we're. Last year was a thousand dollars ninety cents to do that. If you want us, we can look at copy machine, that type of thing, because that's our service contract portion of it. So we need to know what you did to, to make that. That inmate general, general line inmate, that program, the thirty-four seventy-four. That was taken out of the five hundred and that just got put back because that's a, that's money that you can't, can't touch. And the line items, there are two line items that were removed. One is general sheriff's new equipment. That's our consumable equipment, such as our pocket press, our statue books, every year we get, those are costing a hundred ninety dollars. Our gear pieces for radios, those wear out. That costs about forty dollars a year to keep those up and going. Our PBT straws for portable blood tests to come out of there. Harden for two hundred fifty of those straws, it's a hundred and sixty dollars. We replace our PBT units out of there, they're. About seven hundred and fifty dollars per minute, we have to calibrate those things, that's where the calibration gas comes out of, that's two hundred fifty dollars. The calibrated that gas expires, has shelf life of eighteen months. Those total, just those total to thirteen forty-six, we only replaced them a thousand. But we don't have area to replace some of these consumables when we're there because it was. We already reduced it down to what we use down to a thousand. But if we don't have, have the funding to put that in, we can't, can't keep. I'll take those. And then our general sheriff's public relations. That's where all our newspaper subscriptions come out of, that we get our legal foreclosures and stuff, that we need those to, to monitor those set order requirements. These letter journals, fifty dollars, that's ten excess thirty-two. We have civil air patrol membership, that's four hundred and five. That pays for what we have escapes and other portions of searches where we have to, we probably civil air patrol to do aerial surveillance for us. But we need those. Our line sheriff's association is four hundred dollars, that pays for our western state sheriff's fee. Those associations and agreements. That supplies our NIGIL and our other portion, which keeps us in Wyoming's. Requirements for juvenile adult detention portion, where they give us NIGIL access and training, which keeps DOJ off of us. To make sure we're in legality portion with the training. That's four hundred dollars. And then the last crop, these are a hundred and fifty. And then that supplies our training and legal portions for specifically like vague law group that helps with policies and other portions. And then our training that we go to, Brian and I, we go to every year, keeps us up on our training portion. If we didn't pay that, it will cost us twelve hundred dollars each, every year to go to that training state of. So that saves us quite a bit of money, and those total, eleven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Just the amounts for those line items, not counting that inmate. Normally it's increased to be two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. Total with the inmate adding that back in, which means go back and pulls out to five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
It might be frustrating signing, you haven't signed. Um, I don't have any good poker players. Maybe, I was just hearing.
Yeah. Bye.
This is, this is. We have hands, we have knees, and we need to do all this stuff, and did a ten, and I think questions were asked. And I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to unpun, I'm a bad cop today. This is, it's frustrating. If you needed it, we needed it two months ago, a month ago.
How that was here.
Yeah.
That time I was.
So what do you want to do for you?
Uh, you remove the public relations.
With a discussion?
Zero that out.
We had a discussion.
And then you zero out the new equipment.
We had a discussion.
Discussion, I'm not sure if you're gonna eliminate it.
I mean, I mean, you almost will have to sit back and go listen to the tape, that's got to be it. I mean, are we supposed to go back and listen?
I have you not to call you.
So I think I asked you what, what was needed.
Yeah, right.
I'm not sure of the answer that we got, like I said, I'm gonna have to go back and listen to.
Okay. I don't recall, someone took the zero either, so I. I do know that we screwed up on the inmate deal for sure.
Yeah, this will definitely, I remember him saying that we need to go back and then.
There you go. Scott's there.
So, so my, but. We're not gonna make what you guys gave on, on our, like, copy machine, our contract portion of it. Those, those copies cost about two hundred fifty dollars per quarter, and that's, I was, I stated that. And you still kept it down below, which was seven hundred and fifty. So you just want us to shut off the copy machine? I mean, that's.
That's fair, and, and, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. You're being fair, I'm, I'm, here's my, my frustration is, is that the conversations had, the budget was sent out. With the sheets, I mean, I guess I'm assuming, I don't send them out. At that budget hearing, those conversations needed to be had. I mean, I was like.
Okay.
I'm doing it, we're doing it, the. Okay, something's gonna have to change. Perhaps it's on this side.
I have problems, you go. I don't mind, I'm looking at.
Thank you, have fun, bye.
I'm not gonna, I'd like to, but I guess only, only thing in the future to solve this issue, to me, was. We got every single line item, which I thought we were doing, maybe we missed a couple. And say justify this and this amount, and you tell me exactly what you just told me, okay? Ten minutes ago. That's how we fix it. Probably good, somewhere out there, so.
And I, and I think maybe what happened is it wasn't in the hall room. See, and I, and what I'm saying is, but it was on my side.
It could have been, because we missed that, so. So you're carrying your money. I wasn't notified of that.
Let's put on the top of the budget.
Huh?
Let's put on the top of the budget, let's. It's okay, it happened anyway, you heard it. It's, it's terrific, my frustration isn't a cut to.
I was gonna say, those. Subscriptions, those, our association fees and stuff, those are very important, I mean, you guys. Got all your, uh. Commissioner, all that, the Waco, all that stuff, I mean. It, it provides you services, and these provide us services and legal protections also with these memberships. Hey, I don't know, Dan, is it, you ever changed anything, I think you know what you said? No, I haven't. Hey, all of that, you know, didn't, does it never change anything, I think that is, uh, now, uh... I haven't seen anything, I didn't, you're asking for anything out of line. I mean, it's just, it's what we screw over, or we didn't ask you, could've given Ben our screw up during the budget process, or it was forgotten that we missed something. But, uh, I mean, as far as what you're asking for, $700 in these various items, I don't think it was out of line by any means. I get the necessity of, I see anything in there, but maybe think you're looking at stuff that you don't, shouldn't have. That's just starting to mumble operating.
What is new with that math and operation? It was only two counts, other than the inmates.
Power rent, power rent, $64, sorry. Other than regulation, there's new equipment, power rent, and maintenance pay, or, which is the coffee, the coffee. So, next year, maybe I need to do a better job of doing these hearings, asking all those questions. It might be my fault. I don't blame you, so, if I didn't pitch it on us, if there's our DVD, for like more, I mean... Well, if it wants to go down. That's the problem, I think, that we have, is we want to, it's much like this coffee that we were just discussing. I don't know, you know, Jack, as far as what's being, what it's costing to the very standard, that's where we have to have those more in-depth conversations that they're getting with budget hearing processes.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
And, and have a better understanding of...
Well, and I think that's why department, not only, you want to have more than one conversation, and especially before the, before we push it to the end. It isn't always necessary that we have to know what money's coming in. We need to know what money's going to spend in order to know. So, I, I think we can have those conversations earlier. And I apologize for my, my frustration, but you're frustrated too, we're both off. And that needs to find a way to be fixed. And so, I apologize for my, my trying to have a hairdo that's similar to yours.
No, I mean...
And please understand, it's just, I'm... I just think we're going to, to go a little more down this road instead of, you know, again.
And 2476? Uh, 2476.
Plus the inmate, come on.
The inmate.
That's...
The inmate is 3474. 3474? So, it's, the, the, both of them together is, uh, $5,950. I counted it, 950, yeah, counting the inmate. Good thing that this does do those. I mean, I understand frustrations, but maybe the bottom of a better understanding of where the line's going to. And I, and I don't want to do that jeopardizing you guys, I hope you don't feel that. Not my intention, nor from this board's good, so...
As more of a newbie, you know, I'm just starting to understand some of it. The, the public hearing that we have, like, the night before, and I was surprised that nobody shows up and says, "Wait a minute, you did something to my budget we don't like." And so, that's a lot, like, our last opportunity to try to maybe fix these things. So, all this communication, I think, between the departments, I think this year, we will go a lot longer and in depth, trying to cut the budget because we have to. But, but we got one of your department, so that's where this communication comes. We're gonna, we're gonna go through and align and get rid of things. Because it looks okay to us, but it doesn't make sense on your hand, so, there's those opportunities. So, we just need that communication back and forth. I want to see with the public hearing on the Monday night before, next time.
Well, and, and on our side, we'll try and see more of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
So, it'll be 2974 added to the inmate program, which already 500 to get it. And then what other accounts, so that I get it all correct?
Please send it to me now. I can, I can, I can send it to you.
Then you, okay, motion, okay, thank you.
Have a good one.
Yeah, didn't even have that account on there.
So, we remove general law enforcement, not names. That is on it, 750. Which is one, so we're gonna, uh, the public relation, actually, the, uh, they've gone there, but it's 125 dollars. All right, first one. General sheriff's public relation. My half, I didn't have, three last line item, line. This one, I have, that doesn't help. Oh, there, my, yeah. Here, let's see if that's, is that the one? You don't know? Yeah, because we, uh, one of our, Bill, that's a, make it a job. Bill, I came in on that one. Uh, 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 your question, hold on, it's, they're gone. New equipment is off, sheriffs? Yeah, that one's zeroed out. These kinds that you, they're listed on there. I know that we had that conversation of, because we wanted a more detailed definition of where money's are going. Sorry?
Five thousand five hundred forty-six.
So, minus the 500. Excuse me? That's what I was, I... But you got a big year ahead.
We got 2,974 in the inmate program, 346 in new equipment, 64 in power rent, 1,112 in public relations, and 1,000 in the law enforcement maintenance agreement, so...
Aren't you the main, it's a burden?
A thousand?
No, there's, they need 1,000, there's 750 in those.
Oh, so 250.
It's just 250, that one. 250, that's... Uh, very well, here's one, general law enforcement main, three, that's your copy of, uh, sheriff's.
So, 4796.
250 a quarter, we only got three quarters in there. Check correct, 4796. Coming up, 500.
Two and four.
Name number's name.
2974 plus 346, plus 64, plus 162, plus 250. Right?
You fixed it. Plus the 1,000, okay, there. Oh, that's only 270, are there?
Not, 214, so...
4796. Is that fine right now? Or we get...
I think you guys need a real old-fashioned calculator to take.
So, I had 2974 for the inmate program, 346 for the new equipment. Right, for the sheriffs, the 505 more?
No, I was, we did ask that 1,000 for that. We, we even reduced it off the 346. That's what it was given.
So, it should be 1,000?
It should be, yeah. We reduced off of that amount, 346.
Okay, there is a 1,000 more. So, 5450.
So, I'm sorry. Well, I just wanted to know that, can I?
You're just saying that. Because I take the 500, if I would add it, the 500 to it, it would've been 5950? Because I was already 500 and then 1,000.
Yeah, that was it. Yeah.
Right. I'm glad I had that.
I'll be counting.
Maybe wait!
So, this is... 460.
I know, one, two, one, two, five, a count. Much of adjustment makes sense in the fact that...
Relation, I want it cleaned out. So, if you agree, uh, maybe back here, another, yes?
Much more...
You said transfer so much into various accounts.
You want to serve a clear review this time?
Okay. Wait, we're gonna take that one. Financial. Okay, you will be taking 2,974 out of, okay, all of this will be out of financial admin. And moving 2,974 into the law enforcement inmate, inmate program, Moving 1,000 into the sheriff's, 100.00.05.0051000.0000. Adding $60,000 into the law enforcement tower, tower rent, Adding 1,162 into the public relations, sheriff's office public relations, And adding $250 into the law enforcement maintenance agreement,
Now, I gotta have those accounts got zeroed out.
I wish you would read that.
We got two seconds, I'm sorry.
I think it's Karen.
So, motion, probably seconded, move 5450 into the aforementioned accounts, how to finish that. Any other discussion? Maybe not all of them figured, please, yeah.
All right.
Close.
No questions, man.
Can you start on the dude, don't, he has way too many stats. And don't have stats with me because I have to pull them, but I mean, he is...
He's doing his job?
Yeah, he's doing his job. He's been to the board multiple times on, uh, searches for people, uh, searches for, like, I think, right now, the pretty crazy time, but he's been, been at least, at least almost there, at least been in the board once. Now, I'm sure, so... Like, can get your stats.
That's what I'm saying.
I can get your stuff, but, I, I mean, it's a little hard, but I'm not gonna pull random numbers out. But he's been successful, but... If I pull random numbers, I will pull...
You picked that right on its side.
I will, I will get you some, some stats other than that.
The reason we ask is that the settlement of the OIB money is, is, we've asked to be involved in it. And so, that's just as good for the public to understand. Okay? Okay, thank you very much, thank you for your patience with me and...
Thanks, everybody. I love it, gentlemen, bounce, everybody. Thanks, Dan. We got, we got gentleman. Ten years, yes? Three, ten years, yes?